And welcome everyone to the legal select fourth meeting. It is the twenty-third of December. Happy Eve's Eve. I'd like to open the podium. Actually, no. Let me back up. Selecting here, it's immediate character.
Sure. The important thing is not to stop questioning Albert Einstein.
Thank you. Now I'd like to open the podium for any non-agenda items. Seeing nobody rushing the podium, let's move along to the administrators report.
Uh, the only thing I have to report beyond the agenda is that dog licenses expire on December thirty-first. If you haven't re-registered your dog, please do so or license it the first time. Uh, you can do that during normal business hours here at the town office, or you can do it online twenty-four seven at home. Via the town's website, online services. Scroll down, you see dog licensing.
And you'll save a whopping three hundred percent increase? In the late fee?
Oh, uh, depending on condition of your dog. Uh, the late fee is twenty-five dollars, so don't be late.
Yep. Alrighty, well, if you think of anything else, just jump in. Um, let's move along if no one has any questions for David under the administrators report, uh, to upcoming meetings and announcements.
All meetings are here at the town office unless announced otherwise. Uh, town office will be closed tomorrow at noon. Closed all day Wednesday. Closed on Wednesday, January first. Recreation Commission is scheduled to meet Monday, January sixth, five-thirty. Wage and Personnel Tuesday, January seventh, five o'clock. Conservation Commission Thursday, January ninth, five P M. Board of Selectmen Monday, January thirteenth, six P M. And the next day after, we don't usually go beyond the next meeting, but just wanted to alert you, that's the night we're going to have the workshop on the L A A. On the fourteenth, to be determined as far as time. And site mark sometime when hopefully the sun's shining that day, optional.
Fantastic. Any questions for David there? Great, uh, are there any upcoming community events anyone wishes to share? Seeing nothing, let's move along to the meeting minutes from the ninth of December.
I move the board approve the December ninth, two thousand nineteen, meeting minutes as presented.
Moved and seconded. Any discussion? Seeing nothing, all those in favor? Thank you very much. And we have a liquor license renewal application before us from the Young Town Inn and because of holiday business, they are not able to come in. Does anyone have any questions or can I have a motion?
I move the board approve and sign the liquor license application submitted by the Young Town Inn.
Second.
Moved and seconded. Uh, any further discussion? Seeing nothing, all those in favor? Thank you. And are there any updates under selectman updates for any goings-ons and committees or boards?
I don't have any.
The only update that I have is that we had a board meet, actually, I've had three meetings with Midco Solid Waste, a governance committee meeting, uh, strategic and capital, uh, planning meeting, um, and um, a regular board meeting. At the regular board meeting was supposed to be when the Midco Solid Waste budget was presented to uh, us for consideration and to pass and change any changes and pass them along to the respective towns, uh, that clearly was not ready. Provided a little bit of frustration, but, uh, there were, um, some town administrators slash town administrators, I guess is what we'll call them all, um, in attendance and they were polled if to see what kind of a hardship that it would create if the budget wasn't presented, uh, until uh, the end of January, I believe. And it did not, uh, come across as that it would be a hardship to the town, so we've extended the budget, um, process, uh, till the, um, end of January so that we can have a more comprehensive budget ready for the town, so have nothing to report on that. There was a lot that was done, but still, there's a lot of factors, uh, that, um, made this happen. The more we've got a new manager down there, still trying to get up to speed with how the budget process works. Really not used to this type of budget, uh, but he will be, uh, guaranteed. That's about all I've got.
Great, thank you. I have nothing to report. Selectman Fishman, anything you wish to report on?
No, it's relevant to the town.
Fantastic, okay, we'll Google on that.
Well, thanks for, thanks for coming back.
Great to see you. Uh, let's move along to, uh, agenda item number eight, which Dave and I agreed to, uh, title Harbor Matters since we have several things before us to consider. Uh, first of which is a float bid. Do you wish to speak to that at all, David?
Sure, um, we saw bids for the construction of a replacement float for the one that is, when it's in service, is the Easternmost, uh, float. Uh, we were ver- this, we were very fortunate, received, uh, three bids, uh, three bids.
Six.
Six bids ranging from fifteen thousand one hundred and fifty dollars up to thirty-eight thousand three hundred. Um, the low bidder was Islesboro Marine Enterprises, which we have not worked with in the past. Um, they have done a couple of, uh, a float for the town of Islesboro and a couple for Northport. Both reported satisfactory, they, Islesboro Marine said they could meet our specifications. Um, this, the next low bidder was Dark Harbor Boatyard, who has constructed the last two floats for us. And we've been very satisfied with the work that they've done, uh, on those floats and other work they've done at the harbor. Guess that's kind of where we are. The Harbor Master did say, um, if it was his choice, he'd probably go with the second low bidder based on the past experience we've had, but they passed that on.
Thoughts from the board?
So you say that, um, Islesboro is satisfied? And then here we're very satisfied.
Oh.
I mean, it may just
Sorry.
Just be a choice of words, but
Yeah.
Yeah.
But yeah, very satisfied. Whatever I wrote is what I meant.
I mean, I, I my thoughts are that I've been very pleased with, um, what Dark Harbor has provided with us in the past, so that would be my recommendation to the board.
I, I echo, echo that. Um, I know we've, uh, had some, some other work done, um, at the, at the harbor, at the request of the, of the Harbor Master, um, and they pretty much come when we need them. So that means, that's gotta mean something to us.
For the service follow-up.
Correct.
Is a big part of it, yeah.
Yeah, and, um, we're very happy.
We're here in representation of Dark Harbor Boatyard if you have any questions.
Okay, thank you. I, 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 I feel it would be money well spent to continue with Dark Harbor Boatyard, my personal opinion. Obviously not trying to sway anybody one way or the other.
Well, can I have a motion then, and if we wish to discuss it further? Or ask the representative, any questions we can?
I move, uh, that the construction and installation of the new fourteen by thirty float be awarded to Dark Harbor Boatyard Corporation for the, uh, sum of fifteen thousand seven hundred and fifty dollars.
Second.
So moved and seconded. Uh, any further discussion? Oh, yes.
This is nothing about any of the vendors. Just know that if you ha- if you choose a different one, which is certainly within your purview, it may have a chilling effect in the future on other bidders doing other work for the town.
Understood, and
Whether it be floats or otherwise.
And it, it, yes, understood, and I, you know, looking at this list, I feel so fortunate that we had so many respondents to our requests for bids, um, and with absolutely no offense intended to Islesboro Marine Enterprises, who I am sure would probably do wonderful work, it's mm, it's just, it's my, my vote or intention lies in, in line with the motion made, so if there's no further discussion, all those in favor? And motion passes. Thank you very much. And then moving ra- thank you very much also for
Not to be rude, but I'm going to go thank you.
Yes, absolutely, no, it's appreciated that you came.
Thank you. And any questions now or further?
Absolutely.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Thank you all.
Yeah.
Uh, we need to have a conversation about, uh, the pier deck replacement bids that we got back. Um, thank you, David, I'll invite you to chat in a second. As you can see, we got quite a few respondents. Um, and the numbers vary greatly. And what I would like to encourage the board to consider here tonight, um, and I welcome any thoughts, is clearly looking at the scattered nature of the material that needs to be replaced here. Um, I'm wondering if some of the discrepancies in the numbers that we received back is in response to perhaps the increased, uh, efforts that it might require to do the work as we have asked, which is piecemeal, I suppose. Um, and the question that immediately leaps into my mind, and I'm somewhat regretful that we didn't go down this road earlier, is, um, is there virtue and value in asking the respondents to say, well, if it costs this much to replace these boards and avoid damaging the neighboring good, you know, in, I, we say good in quotes. Good boards, are we maybe not that far off from, say, picking a section and just replacing all of them? And there being efficiencies in that? So I welcome any thoughts or comments there.
Do you have a rough idea of the material costs of replacing the red and yellow, uh, as well as the entire decking?
Uh, as the bidders responded or what, what they're?
No, we asked for the, we asked for the pricing to do from your fancy job, do all the red.
Yeah.
Do all the yellow, and then the couple that are out here on the, on the entry that I'm showing on the drawing. So we've got to break down that, but we didn't ask for material versus labor. It's just
Well, I've got to wonder, we've got we've got one that's way out of this way out of the budget compared to the other five. And I got to wonder if that particular contractor, who I personally know has done this before, it was was the, was there a conversation with that contractor and do you think, or should we find out if he's just looking at this like, you know, something is gonna cost more for me to try to select these and save than it's going to to just rip them up and, and and I'm wondering if, if that price, that fifty-three thousand eight sixty-four involves replacing things from here to here, complete. And if so, how much more would it be to do the whole thing? And i- is that, is that his way of thinking? And then you've got three that are right in the, between thirty-three and thirty-nine thousand. Um, were they thinking somewhat the same? Uh, because, you know, once we get into this job, uh, there's just no way I'm gonna, it's gonna ca- take more time to save those than it is to replace them, so I'm just gonna bid this a little high and, and and just replace everything in between those. See, does that make any sense?
Yeah.
I kinda wonder what, um, and, and I'm a little concerned with the low bid.
Also, also of the low bids, really?
And, yeah, or both of the low bids, really, but, um, I ki- I, I wonder, I, my concern is on that low bid, um, I don't know, because that's a local company and I have some history with, um, with that that partic- the, the owner of that, I kinda wonder if that person, if that business has ever worked on a pier. And if so, can we see it for comparison? Can, you know, you know what I'm saying?
Examples of work, you mean?
Yeah. Something, or a, or a tangible telephone number, something that we can call somebody, hey, how was your experience and how did the what, what was the, the end result and how, you know? So I'm a little concerned, actually, yeah, about the, the two lower ones. Um, and it looks like we got one that's way out of the spectrum.
I think, Karen, even without getting into that, I guess I wanna take it back even further, it's like the real question is, does the board wish to only address the structural integrity issues, or are, do we wish to look at it with a mind towards efficiency and usability? If, and this is a big if, 'cause I have no idea if this is the case, if the price mark is not substantially different. So I guess my question to the board is, would the board be willing to ask David to go back to the respondents to the bids and say, woo, how would this change if we're looking at a concentrated section? Because I'm looking at this and there are definitely part, you know, there are segments where there is you know, no damage and specifically under bait bins, where there's no traffic. Clearly, the ramp is serviceable. Um, but would there be economy in asking these vendors to look at it with that mind towards efficiency? And maybe we're not that far off.
Yeah, personally, I think we need that information before we could make an educated decision on this. Yeah.
So David, what does that mean?
I mean, it's almost like this whole section here, here to here, you wouldn't even need to
Right.
Touch barely, you got four boards in that whole thing.
Right.
But then right, and it's just that last section there, but yeah.
So procedurally, David, what, what are your thoughts?
Um, well, you certainly can ta- table or not take any action and give me or staff some direction as to what additional you would like to see. Um, I, from a, from a administrator perspective, um, I'm not at all surprised by the range you see here. I think a lot of it hinges on location. And a lot of it hinges maybe potentially on what people already have to do for work, if don't, or don't have to do and the timeframe involved. Um, I did have some conversations with contractors that were present for the bid opening. And they were in or around thinking that this work for the yellow and the red would take about four days with the crew. So the vast majority of this is probably immaterials. Would be my guess and just, you know, some minor disposal cost. Um, I wouldn't, I mean, unless the board wants to, I wouldn't spend a whole lot of time with the, the last four proposers. I mean, you're talking, the difference between one and three is double. I don't know, as I'd spend a whole lot of time with number two either, unless you don't have confidence in the low bidder's ability, um, but
Well, is it fair for us to ask you to go back to them and say
Sure.
if, if we can agree on a section
Yeah, I mean, we
Here tonight.
We, we, we always reserve the right to, um, award a contract as you see fit and deem in the best interest of the town, I guess I'd have to find the actual language on that. Um, I have had a little bit of conversation with the low bidder to say that we, we didn't have any idea what this was gonna cost, so we basically chose the low end of the spectrum in terms of work. Um, if we were looking to add on, would that be something you're interested in working with us or pricing for us? Sure. You know, who, who wouldn't say, you know?
Sure.
Cause they know at that point. Uh, so I guess it depends on how many you would like me to talk to and
And the stuff.
Yeah, I mean, I think the, if you look at the little colored section. Now granted, I don't know how, the, 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 obviously the red are the thinnest pieces now, and the yellow are a little less thin, but still getting to the point, and the white is satisfactory structurally. We wanna look at how much of difference in elevation, you know, are we talking when we put something in, but to my looking upside down, you're talking somewhere in the neighborhood of this whole solid red line or perhaps even up here down to here. Maybe skipping a little bit along the edge. Um, probably would wanna, um, brick, roll the Harbor Master into that discussion since he's familiar with the, um, uses in terms of hand trucks for bait or walking across that and people. We obviously don't wanna take a hole and make it a bump.
Right.
Either.
Right.
You know, could we, on the, on, some of that, would it be worthwhile to maybe taper a, a portion? You know, the first board onto the new section? Maybe. But or start at the corner and work to the other corner and call it good.
Well, um, looking at the low bid, would it cost to do the whole thing at that?
Yeah.
What's the percentage of boards in red and white, uh, red and yellow, do we know? Is it like thirty-something percent?
That's a really good
It's a little less than
Just, just under.
Yeah, it's somewhere between twenty-five and thirty. I actually calculated it today, which is the, hand scribbled down in my office. Um, we were talking Don't go anywhere.
I'm sorry, Jess, I was about to comment on what Karen said and I missed, were you saying what percentage is the red and yellow boards representing?
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah.
So that's, that's a good point, if, if it's two-thirds, or, well, it doesn't look like it's two-thirds, it looks like it's
It looks like it's worse than it is. It's, it's about a, um, about a quarter, little more than a quarter of the entire deck area.
Okay.
Oh, really? It's just a little more than a quarter?
I mean, certainly if you reverse the color pattern, you'd be like, wow, there's a lot of black here.
Right.
It's fine, you know, but the point remains the same is that not knowing, David, you articulated it very well, when we entered into this conversation, we had no idea what the scope of the cost would be, and so hitting it at its core of structural integrity, now we know where that benchmark is. And to your point, to your point, um, yeah, I think it would be nice to know what, what our options are. Partial replacement or full replacement.
Yeah, and, and I also think I'd like to know, how are you gonna do it?
What's
Have you done it?
Removing, yeah, ha- have you done it? If so, at any chance, we can have the name of whoever it is you did it for and, and
Yeah, can we, can we see some, some comps in terms of projects?
I will say that, that, um, the low bidder did submit a, um, a cover letter with his um, bid. And said this wasn't their normal line of work, but they thought they were well-suited with roll-off dumpsters for waste, mini excavator and the specialized tools, hydraulic and air to do the job, but we certainly can get some more information from them.
Yep.
Okay.
Uh, well, can we put it back in your lap for a revisit?
Yeah.
In January?
Yeah, we'll have it for the next meeting.
So, so is, and then just to be clear, is what you're, what you're going for is now that we've got a price for these colored boards, we're gonna look for, well, what would it do, what would it cost to do the whole or the whole thing, or, or like these fourteen sections from that long red line you were talking about down to like, I wonder about that too, whereas, you know, 'cause these sections below and, you know, these two up here are just, I mean, between, between six sections, there's six boards that need, or five sections or six boards in those five sections, but then the rest of them have
See where it says sixty-five point two there?
Yeah.
Start from there and go to twelve point oh.
Yeah, right.
Or thirteen, uh, I'm sorry, do you want it, thirteen point six, I guess?
Yeah, yeah, thirteen point six, or I, I'd actually started sixty-three point five, right, 'cause it says sixty-five point two, is like those, those two lines are, are
Oh, I see, yes, yes.
Sixty-three, five up to, yeah, up to, uh, yeah, I see what you're saying, like ten-four or, or, or fourteen-four, you know, but anyway, somewhere in there.
Yeah. Let's, um, we can work probably, cause it'd get a per per board price or per plank price or the whole thing versus the more, more one section in the middle.
Mm-hmm.
And the thing that adds into part of the challenge, uh, particularly when you start doing more on the edge is there's curb there too, with the curb, so
Avoiding getting into that.
Yeah, or minimizing that. We do have some, um, some of that that we wanted to replace, but we didn't include it in the bid, figuring we could negotiate a change order with whoever was, but
Right.
We'll get there.
So do you feel like you have what you need to
Yeah, I mean, I'll just, yeah, I'll pick up the phone and call them and we'll get down there and
And I'm, I'm sorry that it's coming back in your lap, but I don't think any of us had any idea what the
Range.
Yeah, oh, my, myself, myself included.
Yeah, yeah.
And, um, you know, if, I think if I, if I'd known the price was going to be as inexpensive as what was proposed now, back when we were putting this or having discussion and debate, I would've said, let's just do the whole thing, or let's do three-quarters of it and be done. So, but we know now this project wasn't scheduled to start until March anyhow. So there's still a little bit of wiggle.
'Cause the, the big thing for me, it's funny, 'cause the, the thing that really sticks in my head a little bit is that whole, you know, unevenness at the end of the day, like you go to all that trouble for whichever price you pick here and you still, it mi- it might be nice to if, if there was a price that did a whole section, so you know, you're not gonna have people tripping and caught, creating some sort of safety
Make it worse even.
Making it worse in some ways, right, you're like
The structural integrity is there.
But you've created a whole other problem there, for, you know, a pedestrian problem or whatever it is and
Right. Yeah.
You know, solve one, create another, it'd be
Indeed. Um, okay, so anything else on that particular subject? Alright, so let's move along to, um, finalizing the list of qualified more inspectors. Uh, I would like to start off by saying I'm disappointed that we are receiving this list now. Uh, when it clearly states that we should have gotten it in early, or, well, at least mid-November. So
You did get it in November.
Well, but we didn't finish, we didn't
You didn't.
I wasn't here, we didn't have the conversation.
Right.
So I'm I'm disappointed that we haven't been able to have a more continuous conversation with this. And what I would say is that I don't see anyone here on this list that isn't qualified. I will say that there are, um, a number of very qualified A number of very qualified inspectors who aren't on this list, um. Who I would think could or should be, uh, but I don't know. And David, perhaps you can answer this, cause Mike isn't here, um, if. He feels like this is sufficient. For as a reference for our harbor users or if it should be. Or can be added to or, you know, just the nature of these five. Companies that are represented here.
I think the harbor master put this together based on people that were, he was familiar that were already doing inspections in Lincolnville Harbor.
Uh-huh.
Uh, certainly, it's in the board's um, purview to. Uh, revise as you deem appropriate according to the ordinance, so you're supposed to review it, revise it and approve it.
Yep.
So if you know of others that are. Capable firms, companies, human beings, um. Add them to the list. If you know someone here that are not necessarily capable, whatever, we can strike them.
Um, I mean, I would refer to the list of qualified inspectors that Belfast Harbor. Provides to their mooring users, um, there's a number. On that sheet that they provide, um, there's Fields Dive Service. Who does a lot of inspections in Rockport. I don't know if he would be willing to travel to Lincolnville, but.
If he's capable, I say he, if that person's capable. Um, put him on the list, if people call him and he says, or she says, no, don't go that far.
I'm sure the the town of Rockport would be willing to voucher his. Capabilities, I think he pretty much, and then there's another, there's one more. But I don't know if he goes beyond.
If you think those are readily available online, you might stand in the hall and grab them and bring them back at the. Conclusion or as we go, or I can go grab them now, what are you, what's your?
Um.
Run into that.
They should be readily available online for sure, um. My other contention is with the footer here on this page and I don't understand. The qualification of commercial fishermen may inspect their own mooring.
Do they go through some kind of training for inspecting moorings to be a commercial fisherman?
No, I mean.
That that doesn't seem appropriate.
But it's also curious to me why Pendleton Yacht Yard or Dark Harbor Boat Yard, who both have moorings in our mooring field, wouldn't be capable. Of inspecting their own mooring. I don't under, I don't understand, and it's no offense in particular to fishermen, I'm just. I don't understand and I. My understanding of our ordinance and David, please collect, correct me if I'm wrong, the reason to have. This specific language in the ordinance and to have qualified mooring inspectors are. In theory, these qualified mooring inspectors should have insurance. And that insurance information would be available to those individuals who would hire them. And would have the skills and ability to and knowledge to inspect a mooring. Why would we allow any private, random group of private individuals to inspect their own moorings? It ju, it's it like, it takes, like, that that isn't in the more. It isn't in the ordinance, so why would we allow that to be a contingency? On the qualified mooring inspectors.
Has this footnote been on previous suggested qualified mooring inspecting?
No, this is the first time you've ever had one of these lists.
Okay, oh, fine, okay.
But it is, I mean, it's it's obviously for the protection of not only the. Mooring holder and boat owner, but for the protection of others should some boat. Be break away, do damage to somebody else, I mean it.
Well, and as the ordinance clearly says, if your boat breaks loose from your mooring, you're liable for any and all damages that are incurred. And I would think that as a mooring holder, one would wish to. Hire someone with a full force of. Insurance and qualifications and all of that, which is part of, which falls ultimately upon us to approve this list.
Yeah.
That then goes out to all of our mooring users.
Do we have the ability to, I mean, that commercial fisherman may inspect their own mooring does seem like a conflict of interest. Do we have the ability as a board to remove that from?
Yeah, I mean, what.
It just seems kinda crazy.
What the the ordinance says is that the Board of Selectment shall rev- review, revise as it deems appropriate. And approve the list of qualified inspectors no later than the third first of December.
Uh, well, well, I I mean, I personally would, I would personally move to. Or I don't move, but but I would suggest that that should be stricken from. It's, I think it should be required from for all mooring holders to have a qualified inspector inspect the moorings. Like, it could do from this list or from or or those that you would add, but like, you know.
Well, and I think David would run and grab.
A third part.
Information so that we can approve it here tonight, um.
Um, sorry, stepping back, have the commercial fishermen, have they had their moorings inspected by other people? Or have they been doing it themselves?
My understanding from previous presentations that our harbor master has made is that it's been a self-inspection.
Okay, so legally, someone who has a mooring in Lincolnville Harbor. They can do it, they can they can do it themselves, they could hire someone not on this list, is that correct?
The way the ordinance used to be. Uh, we 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 required a mooring inspection and with the renewal application. Went a form that was supposed to be filled out and returned and. I won't say anyone, but probably anyone, I could inspect yours, you could inspect mine, sign on the dotted line and send it back. Um, they're not, um, moorings aren't, it's not required to be inspected. In every town, I mean, if you look back far enough, we didn't have mooring inspections required in Lincolnville. And, you know, certain towns have adopted very rigid. Um, requirements regarding inspections and Lincolnville has moved incrementally towards that. I won't say very rigid, but towards a more rigid inspection requirement. And this, when this change was adopted, um, a year ago, a year and a half ago? Wasn't this past June, I think it was the June before, or may have been in November, but whatever. Um, this language was inserted to have a qualified mooring inspector.
Okay.
And harbor master gets to prepare a list and hand it to you and then you. Do whatever you want to it and move it on, and we send, we'll send this list out with the inspection form and the renewal application. So that people know who qualified mooring inspectors are.
Okay, thanks.
And I guess part of my thinking behind. Supporting the. Sort of unilateral enforcement of this is that we do have an exposed harbor and we do have a shallow harbor and we have. A lot of commercial use and we have um, recreational use, we have a ferry, you know, so making sure that. All of, it it's not our equipment, it's private equipment, but the private equipment that is being employed in a public space. Is being done so in. As well as possibly can be maintained manner makes sense.
What's the cost of uh, yearly mooring inspection by an outfit like one of these outfits? That's something.
Average two hundred bucks.
Oh, really? So it's not some, right, okay, so you're not imposing a.
I mean, you run the risk of them saying, oh, your chain's worn out or a shackle needs to be replaced or.
Well, yeah, but that would be.
Any of the hardware has worn out.
Sure, but that's that's, I'm assuming if you have a boat and it's chained out there and you. You've paid for that stuff to be there to begin with, right, I mean, that would be.
Yeah.
And it it doesn't seem like an extravagant or exorbitant expense to impose on. You know, a person that's already got a boat out there. I I don't know, you know what I'm saying, it's not like a heating fuel tax or something where. It's just an essential thing you need and you know, some people, you you add two hundred bucks to that and that could be a make or break situation, whereas this is sort of a. I mean, it's all a luxury item, but you're either.
Well, certainly not for our commercial fleet.
Right, for the commercial fleet, that's a no-brainer and I think even for the private fleet, it would seem like, you know, if you if you had that. Thing, you can, if you can afford to put a boat out there and thing, you can probably afford a two hundred dollar.
Well, and they're doing it already, you know, so are the recreational users, uh, I just. If we're going to have that qualification, I would say commercial users can self-inspect. That would be my. My one uh, compromise there. I just don't understand why it's fishermen only and why. The people doing the mooring inspections can inspect their, I I don't know, they just, you know, there's a, there are other commercial users. Of our harbor having moorings out there that.
Have to hire a service.
Are professional.
Yeah.
Mooring inspectors that are in- included in that little caveat.
Yeah, yeah.
So, so, yeah, so that's, I mean, I would be much more comfortable having the ordinance be the ordinance. Here's the list of qualified inspectors, that's it.
Yeah, yeah.
And and the second thing is, this bottom thing, harbor master may approve additional qualified inspectors, that's not actually true, we're the ones that approve it, so. Having that there, that should really say the Board of Selectment may approve additional qualified inspection inspectors, right?
Something, yeah, I was.
But but that's a play on words, inspections.
But you, but see, that also is is contrary to the ordinance. All of this, we have to approve by the thirty-first of December and then it goes forward and then it goes out while Melissa mails out all of the paperwork. And if it doesn't come back by July first, then fines are invoked and then if issues are found and not remedied. Then the mooring use is terminated. I mean, that's why we have the ordinance. We don't like, I don't understand if they need to create additional layers.
Right, I mean, you went to the trouble to make this whole ordinance, the language in the ordinance is clear, let's stick to the ordinance and this, these. Right, I think both those lines should be taken out, just what you said, list of qualified people. Add some names if you, I mean, I'm out of, I'm out of my wheelhouse there, but I mean, if you, anybody that uses waterfront, you know, knows other qualified inspectors. Cause I think the more the merrier there in terms of.
Yeah.
Having qualified inspectors available and and then, yeah, that's that, just.
I mean, and I, so I will say it that I have no issue with these individuals representative, but I do feel the more the merrier. I will say that I would probably abstain from the actual vote because we utilize a couple of the other one. We actually utilize some of these people on the list, so they just, just for utter transparency, I don't wanna. Muddy the waters, but I think throwing a few more names on there never hurts.
Should it, or, oh, okay, it's so then in terms of what Josh was saying, it it's so to to, the harbor master may approve. It, we just strike that line altogether or you just change it to select?
Well, this.
No, we strike it.
Strike it all together, okay.
This is, I mean, it's great you sent us this, but this is not something that we're gonna put forth, this is like information that we're gonna do our own document.
Right, 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 okay.
And we also need to make it clear that. You know, review the, review the ordinance, all mooring owners need to abide by the ordinance.
Yeah, I I would like that in writing to the harbor master, just to make it clear.
Do you wanna make a motion?
I, oh boy, I move that we um, notify the harbor master. That all moorings uh, in Lake Harbor must be inspected by a qualified um, mooring inspector.
So moved?
Should there be language in that about?
Well, do you wanna second it and then we can have a?
Second.
Okay, so discussion.
Uh, to to, should we add something to that, uh, amended to say something along the lines of. The harbor, asking the harbor master to make sure that this. Ordinance is disseminated properly amongst all.
We could simplify it to incorporate your idea saying, uh, that. Mooring inspections and applications will be enforced as as written in the harbor ordinance.
Yeah.
Second.
You're seconding, seconding the amendment.
Yeah, it's seconding that amendment, yeah.
Okay. I I think that works.
Assuming that what you just said wasn't an amendment, cause that was well said, but it's hard, it's like.
Um, and, yeah, and.
So what does it actually say?
Yeah.
So the amended motion would say.
Follow the ordinance?
Instruct, well, instruct the, okay, so now, so now we've got a seconded motion, I'm gonna muddy the waters even further and say. You know, to make sure that harbor, that a memo is issued to the harbor master reminding him that it. Moorings and mooring inspections will be enforced as dictated by the harbor ordinance. And that all mooring holders and permit applicants get that same information.
Yeah, okay, okay.
Yeah, we have to go by the ordinance.
Okay.
Right. Yeah, we can't just change it.
Any further discussion? No, seeing nothing, all those in favor. Thank you very much. Um, and so we still need to approve the mooring list, so do you wanna?
Do you want me to go grab those other two?
Uh, yes, do you mind if we have a brief conversation about harbor fees while you go and do that? Does the board wish to just jump ahead a little bit and talk about harbor fees? Um, I would be curious to know everyone's thoughts on harbor fees. The harbor committee has recommended no change.
But yet the harbor master. Uh, said maybe we ought to be setting money aside for things like dark, uh, things like pier. Decking replacement, missing that and, but then the harbor committee recommends no fees, no fee increase.
Right.
That's that's kinda conflicting to me, um. I I don't feel ten percent increase is outlawed.
Agreed.
And and we have no representation here tonight to argue and or ask questions. So I really would like not to have any. Negative feedback when I drive through town. For lack of a better way to say it, I mean.
Good luck with that one.
Well, it's gonna be a one to, one side of conversation, I'm sorry.
A reasonable request, yeah, by any measure.
Well.
Good luck with that.
Yeah, well, I know, and there's gonna be some, I know, but you know something, the budget is, you know, there's been a recommendation for no. For no, um, for no fee increase. Uh, but there's also been a recommendation, well, maybe you should think about putting some money aside for this and that, well, yeah.
Well, and also creating a fund and starting to set aside significant amounts of money for the eventual. Rebuilding of the pier.
Million rebuild.
So, that's where I get, I have to take a little step back and say. I understand that we have limited infrastructure at the harbor, we have a small pool of users. But even if it is a symbolic contribution, which really a ten percent increase. Is a symbolic contribution towards the efforts. It seems only fair to ask the individuals who are using the harbor to contribute. Towards the harbor and I don't. I don't feel that a ten percent increase is going to push. Our fees way out of line.
Can can anyone here? Uh, enlighten me on how much a commercial user makes using the Lincolnville. Use, uh, the fish pier? Because you think about other businesses.
About like Landing Craft or Pendleton Yacht Yard or Fisherman?
Fisherman and the and the water taxi, like what, what? I'm just curious, because I don't think these numbers are a burden, um, I'm assuming they make. I I don't know. I I don't know. I actually have no idea. Um and and I'm completely fine with ten percent. I'm wondering if we should, if it, if it should go up dramatically uh more than that. But it would be helpful to have some sense of of um how much they're making directly utilizing this very expensive infrastructure that they pay for.
That would be an interesting conversation to have.
And I, and I, I wish we could have it here with with users, but.
Yeah, um. Well, and perhaps that's something that we workshop, you know. Particularly if we're going to entertain the conversation about doing any sort of massive rebuilds to the pier structure because uh a lot of the encumbrances that we have been operating under with the monies that we received to do the original build dissolve as of January. So it's sort of a brave new world in terms of how we choose to maintain the pier structure. Um, and I think it would, it would benefit us probably to have some sort of workshop to to explore what our plans are. I mean, much like you do with Midco Solid Waste and planning ahead for the closure of that facility or we do with we do with any sort of long-term big, big number of things, it's factoring in all of the users and um, the affordability, not unlike the LIA building, you know, we are going to be having an interesting conversation of how does this benefit the town? How do we afford it? All of, all of those, those figures. But I think for, for the conversation tonight, and I don't know if you had a chance to review a lot of our neighboring um
Yeah, it, right.
mooring structures, you know, whether it's Northport or Searsport or Stockton Springs or St. George or any of those comparable, cause it would never be fair to compare us to Camden or Rockport or Belfast or any of those, you know, that that's like, they just have sort of a Disneyland of waterfront facilities, but um, we're not drastically out of line when it comes to um similar size harbors.
Right.
And some even go, as you can see with um some of the municipalities really break it down depending on user, you know, if you're a groundfish user or an eel fisherman or a lobster fisherman or a lobster dealer, you know, they really start to split some hairs.
Yeah, yeah.
So, uh, well, before we make a motion for that, I would, cause we ran into this before, is if we do do a ten percent increase rounding it up to the next dollar um just so it's a nice round number as opposed to
Yeah.
thirteen forty-seven or something like that.
Right.
Um would make sense to me. So, um any more thoughts on that or does someone want to make a motion?
Well, it's interesting that you should bring up, which is something that needs, needed to be brought up, the uh, what's gonna happen in in January, so we're gonna be taking a long hard look with how we're maintaining it, how we're gonna maintain it in the future.
Yeah.
And future development.
Yeah.
And it's gonna be expensive.
Yes.
Very expensive.
Yes.
So.
Much more expensive than it was to build the initial.
Absolutely.
In nineteen ninety?
Hmm, twenty-five years ago.
To thirty, was it a thirty-year agreement? Like, I guess it would be ninety.
Yeah.
And I think we should all, like the LIA building, keep an open mind in the future as to do we wanna maintain it deep into the future? You know, look at, look at all possible, just don't just stick to a dogmatic uh uh
Correct.
point of view of just, we have to pour it, money into it forever.
Thanks, David.
Yeah, yeah.
So I could not locate Rockport readily, but I think off Belfast and Camden's excerpt.
Okay.
And Belfast puts more than just mooring inspectors on that list.
Yes. Great.
Oh, yeah, well, there's, wow. So this is, there's a lot of.
Yeah.
Lot of options. Um, I mean, do we just pile these onto the list or is there, is there, is it like you have, you, you, this is out of frankly, I, I wouldn't this is out of my I don't know, any of these companies from each other, so.
Yeah, well, I would say um certainly I see no issue with anything on the Camden Harbor list. I don't know all of them, but again, it would be up to the individual to to interview and certainly Fields Dive Service, very qualified, uh Rockport Charters, very qualified, handles a ton of mooring work. Two Harbor Marine is already on um, on the list. I don't know these private individuals at all, um. And the Belfast Harbor Marine Services is pretty broad spectrum, um. The second two for sure, the first doesn't necessarily apply, Front Yard, Front Street Shipyard doesn't they've kind of lumped everything in together between um boatyards, canvas people, et cetera. Um, so I would say the only two that would apply here would be um the second and third.
Winslow's and Neptune?
Correct.
Alright.
Otherwise, I think they're just services.
Do we wanna? It might be too late, but do we wanna run these additional names by the Harbor Master or?
We have to have these approved by the thirty first of December, so we aren't meeting again. Is the challenge, um.
So we can.
So what do we wanna do? These right here, all of these are local people. I know every one of these people. Uh, some of them have been doing it for years.
Right.
Um, so what do we wanna do? Add these and these two to the list that that uh had been submitted to us? Which is a good selection.
I think it offers our harbor users a broad spectrum of
Yes.
of opportunities to get an inspection done.
It certainly does. These just guys rip the street.
So.
Okay.
Is that clear, David?
Everybody from Camden and two, second and third on the Belfast list.
Yeah, Bob Winslow's Dive.
Yep.
And I guess Neptune.
Yep.
Belfast Boatyard says mooring services, is that, that doesn't include inspections?
I, I don't, I don't even know that one.
It's so general, it's hard to.
Well to be completely honest, I don't know if, this was updated in January twenty eighteen, um
Oh, I see.
and I know that Front Street, I, I don't wanna speak out of turn and I really like mea culpa if I'm putting my foot in my mouth, but I don't know what business Belfast Boatyard is doing. Front Street Shipyard absorbed a lot of that.
Okay.
Oh, yeah.
So I don't, I don't.
I think if somebody feels aggrieved by the list.
They, please let us know.
They can come, they plead their case. You can add them to the list after December thirty first if they make a call or for subsequent years.
Yes, thank you.
It's gonna be a learning curve, first time out.
Yeah, if someone, if someone says, I can't believe you overlooked me or or whatnot, and you know, again, I'm just speaking from my experience having, having and having moorings inspected for clients, so.
I think also to your point about the Harbor Master being, it does, it does say in the ordinance that this has to be in by the thirty first, so.
Right.
Yeah.
If he has an issue with what we're adding to, he should have been here now. Not, I'm not saying that in the mean, I'm just saying like, you know, that's on him, I think.
Yeah.
Yeah.
But we can always take someone off if.
It should be a new point.
Yeah, yeah.
Yep, um. So we were in the midst when David came back in talking about um harbor fees. So since we were there with harbor fees, can we finish that conversation and have a motion there?
Yep.
Um, and then we'll go back and wrap up our conversation with regards to qualified inspectors.
I move that the harbor fees for twenty twenty be set at a ten percent increase rate as the two thousand nineteen fees. Round it up to the next dollar.
Second.
So moved in second. Uh, any further discussion? Seeing nothing. All those in favor? Thank you very much. And then, okay, going back to the list of um qualified mooring inspectors, uh can I have a motion?
Move that the board prove the qualified mooring inspector list as amended.
So moved? Seconded, uh further discussion?
Just to make sure we understand the amendment, it is what the Harbor Master submitted, less the two lines at the bottom.
Correct.
Plus the Camden Harbor lit, mooring inspector list, plus the second and third on the Belfast.
Correct.
List of vendors.
Yes.
Okay, good. So I wanted to make sure I understood.
So we have a move, we have a motion in the second, uh, we have a move, uh if there's no further discussion, all those in favor? Thank you very much, and I'm going to abstain. Okay, thank you. Um, David, did you wish to get caught up at all in the harbor fees or?
Nope, you've made a motion that, so I can run with it.
Fantastic. Uh, let's move right along to um having a brief conversation about our McGonacook Dam meeting that was postponed due to weather.
Oh, do we have to do the late fee?
Oh, thank you. Thank you. No, 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 no. Um I knew, I looked at that several times and told myself not to.
Yeah, yeah, yeah.
Um.
That's what the board is for.
Absolutely. Uh, so also in the ordinance, uh, the board is required to establish a late fee for any mooring holder failing to submit uh the mooring inspection form on a timely basis.
What has it been?
Yeah, it's a.
Never had one.
We should increase that by ten percent. There's never been a fee?
Not a late fee for mooring inspection, no.
Yes, so this is the penalty for i- if you don't have your inspections done.
Exciting, we're breaking new ground tonight.
Um, and what, in timely basis, what, is that too broad a wording? Did, do we, is there, is there?
Late fee, you mean?
Yeah, is there a due date for when you're supposed to, July first is when you're supposed to have had your moorings inspected and, and the form in?
July first. We could just we even change that, suggest a motion to, by July first.
Yeah, exactly. Just, just leave it as a hard date because that way, it's, you know, it's, it's like the dog licensing stuff, you know, whatever, if you did.
For, for what we're discussing.
Yeah, yeah.
Yeah, well, we can make sure to insert that in.
Um so the amount is really the.
Well.
Fifty dollars?
How's that?
Dollars?
Just gonna look and see if other towns have a late fee imposed. Okay, so Stockton Springs has a, a late fee of fifty dollars for all harbor fees.
Well, and ours is double whatever the permit fee is, but I, we don't necessarily wanna you know, if they don't get their paperwork back on time, um. We certainly want it there to be an incentive to, to get it done, you know?
Yeah, um. My, my first thought was a hundred, you said fifty, and somewhere in there, it seems like something like that is reasonable. You don't wanna make it like crazy. Cause what, to double the other, like what you're saying is, that's a lot of money, right?
That's, that's a, that's a big chunk.
So here's one right here that says, please note, late fees will be applied if mooring and or waitlist payments are not received by March eighth, two thousand nineteen, or whatever. Late fees will be, will be doubled the applicable fees. Reminders will not be sent.
That's where, that's where the mooring permits, yeah.
I don't know. Gotta be something in there for an incentive.
Well, some harbor, some harbors disallow use of the mooring until, you know, I mean, that's, that's a, that's a steep one. Um.
That's an incentive.
But just until you get it in, so then, I mean, let's say you're a day late, you're gonna.
Yeah, well, I, fifty seems really arbitrary, but I also don't have a better idea and given that this is a pilot program essentially. I, you know, it.
I, I had the same thought.
I keep seeing something similar to fifty dollars in the other towns for other late fees.
Yeah.
Other types of late fees.
Uh, so does someone wish to make a motion?
I move that the board establish the late fee of fifty dollars for any mooring holder failing to submit the mooring inspection form by July first.
So moved? Do we have a second?
Second.
Uh, further discussion? If you want more time, Karen?
Another one, right, too.
Well.
I'm good.
Okay, all those in favor? Thank you very much, and thank you, John, for not letting us miss that one. Okay, so we didn't get to have our dam meeting with the dam committee.
Damn it.
Camden. Taking full advantage. Um, and unfortunately, we have received no communication, um so seeing as how Selectman Barrows is foolishly not here celebrating the holidays, what's the board's thoughts on uh making a motion to tag him to send a lovely letter saying budget season's coming up and we couldn't possibly assign any sort of money towards this line without having some sort of conversation first?
I think.
I, I move that Selectman Barrows be authorized to write a letter to the Camden Select Board indicating our desire to reschedule the McGonacook Dam workshop before February first, two thousand twenty, so that if any funds for the McGonacook dams from the town of Lincolnville for fiscal year twenty-one or beyond will be sought, this request can be included in the initial draft budget for our consideration.
Second.
Moved and seconded? Further discussion?
A lot to say.
Seeing nothing. All those in favor? Fantastic. And thank you, Selectman Barrows. For your volunteering. Uh, and we have before us a draft um regarding the conversation that we had started for a broadband committee charge and um I'd like to hear everyone's thoughts, additions, deletions, any other concerns um regarding this entire subject.
I don't see how I can be part of that. Just getting it out there.
Mm-hmm.
Kinda I got a lot of committee meetings going on.
Mm-hmm.
Uh and I'm trying to not miss any, so I think it would be a disservice if I took that on.
Josh, you indicated you, you had interest in it, yeah.
Yes.
And I can help out with that too, Josh. I, I mean, we can both do that if you want.
Yeah, that would be great.
Well, that's great. Well, so first, we just, before we get to that, which is fantastic that you both have interest in that and I wholeheartedly support it, um, we just need to approve the draft of this.
Yeah, that's why I was going through the draft, that was one of the, I didn't get to. Yeah, that's why I was going through the draft, that was one of the, I didn't get to. I was just blasting through it, um, but, uh. Yeah, I mean.
I don't see anything that needs to change here.
Yeah, this looks pretty good. Um, yeah, okay.
Do we wanna perhaps make the timeline a little more aggressive? So if there was action that required a town meeting vote, um, or a recommendation uh, to the board that the board wanted to consider that um would potentially need a town meeting vote, that this would be done before then?
You mean to happen at the annual town meeting?
Yeah, yeah.
Cause technically speaking, we could call, you know.
Right, yeah.
Um. I have concerns that the research and conversation can happen adequately in anything less than six months.
I think that's fair, I mean, there's no reason to um create a time pressure. Right? Bill, there's a bunch of information gathering, right, and then.
Yeah, I mean, otherwise, uh, you know, you're gonna be approving the town meeting warrant in early May.
Right, never mind, that's just, yeah, I mean, that's.
Just thinking, and, and we've gotta get out and beat the bushes to find people to serve too.
Right, there's that. There's fishing.
And, and there's nothing, there's certainly nothing to say that if the committee, when they got together, decided that they could get this done fast, or there's nothing that prohibits.
Right.
A, or if something comes up that needs to be on the annual town meeting warrant.
Right.
They could bring forth that recommendation at any time.
Yep. Um, any other thoughts on this, or can someone make a motion?
I move that the board approve and sign the broadband committee charge dated December twenty three, twenty nineteen.
Second.
Moved and seconded, uh, any further discussion? Seeing nothing, all those in favor? Thank you very much. And we are gathering steam towards the conversation of fiscal year twenty twenty one. Anyone have anything burning in their hearts, in their souls, that they wish?
I'm gonna add to the budget.
To bring up so that David can start to assimilate it.
We've certainly started behind the scenes gathering information and whatever else from other boards and committees, but um we all work to you with. If there was some particular thing that we were unaware of, the sooner we know, the better, cause otherwise the next six, six weeks are gonna go by pretty quickly before we start budget reveal. So I do have a couple of things that stick in the back of my mind that are worthy of at least a conversation. Um, I know Waldo County Sheriff's Department has been to us a little while ago about having a spot. Whether it be here in the town office or somewhere. Um, that has kinda fallen by the wayside, and it's my understanding that, well, it didn't really, it came, the information was, well, I'm not sure it was really well received. Uh, and it didn't seem like there was enough room at the town office for us to just have a place to come in and process some things and maybe make a few phone calls without a lot of hassle. Um, I would like to. I, there's at least one place uh right here in the center of town that I think would be advantageous for us to explore. Have, uh, making a space to have a relationship with Waldo County Sheriff's Department. I think it would take a lot of money, but that's just one thing that's been on the back of my mind. Um, the other thing is, uh, I know I've been pushing to uh maintain town infrastructure, whether it be buildings, lawns, um, things of that nature, but I think we really need as a board uh to look at the future. And it kinda ties in with the next item on our agenda, possibly, of um hiring a company or employing someone, I, I don't really wanna go that route right now, but at least uh exploring how much it would cost to have a qualified person with equipment to take care of all of our uh landscaping needs on town-owned buildings. Uh, to include the ball fields, um, Riesman Park, down at Lincolnville Beach, here at the town office, um, and things of that nature. Now, we have an agreement with the school at this time. Um, they're taking care of the ball fields uh as we know them right now. I think we need to have a conversation about all of that. Uh, for um upcoming years. I'm not saying twenty twenty, this upcoming year, but I think we need to have a hard look at twenty twenty one and twenty twenty two. Maybe twenty twenty two being the year that that stuff gets taken over. And, and in my mind, for a number of reasons, uh, to do that, but the biggest reason is donated assistance and or volunteers are a thing of the past. And I'm not saying that we don't have any out there, and God love the people that are helping us. Um, but there's, the people behind the scenes are so few compared to what it used to be. Um, so I think as a town, uh, I think we need to prepare the town for those types of things. Now, I know we've got many, many, many other things that we need to talk about. But I think the conversation needs to be had about that. I also think we may need to look at a few committees to kind of consolidate them.
Mean reviewing charges of certain committees?
Correct.
Okay.
Yep.
The, the line item to, to pay for a camera at the pier, that's, that is money that just keeps carrying over, is that correct? Or that's?
We have that, yes.
We need to do that.
Okay.
We need to do that.
So this is me saying we should buy a camera, cause we already have money and we approved it, I don't know, how many years ago?
I know, we've had this conversation a couple of times, like, let's, let's get the camera, well, um. This really isn't the, it's not part of the agenda or, or anything, but do you wish to make a motion and establish a timeline for this to happen?
Oh. I, I move that um the town administrator, um. Pr- pr- present a number of, present options to the board of selectmen by the end of January for a camera at the Fish Pier.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion?
David, is that uh a reasonable timeline for you?
Sure.
Okay.
All those in favor? Thank you, and thanks for bringing it up, cause it's, it's one of those little things that we talk about during budget time, it's there. Yep, excellent. Um, anything that we need or should, or you want to consider for twenty twenty, twenty twenty one?
Are there any more town-owned lights that are not LED?
Yeah, good question.
Because we know that's a no-brainer.
We, we replaced, we targeted all of them, we replaced some and got rid of some, right? Is that what we did? The, the streetlights have not yet been converted, but you've told us which ones to convert and which ones to eliminate. I was thinking more of, I think the, I think the lights on the exterior of the fire station got changed to LED too, but I'd have to check that. So we're still in process? Well, we never talked about the one for the fire station, but yes, the others are still in process, that's a good way to describe it.
Do we want to consider the fire station?
Um, maybe we ought to have a um quick in, not, not tonight, inventory of what we have left, cause I know the ones inside the San Salt Building, uh, one of them fried, and we were gonna replace the two inside with LED, and I don't know if our electrician has done that as yet, but it'd be good for me to visit that with them. Inventory lights, yep.
Cause that certainly wouldn't have bearing on the budget, yeah.
Yeah.
The other thing that I had, you know? Okay, the other thing that I had is we got a price on a um fire monitoring system for the fire department.
We did.
Where are we in that process?
Um, we certainly don't have that kind of money kicking around, so I think you're gonna see something come forward in your budget preparations.
Yep, perfect. And that is, that included other buildings in town?
Um. I think we got a couple different recommendations, but I know it was centered around fire station. I don't know off the cuff.
If I, if I remember correctly, was there something to be done here at the town office, at the fire department, and the LIA building? Was there a recommendation for something here?
Well, we got, no, we had to, we had to test and inspect, or inspect and test, or whatever they.
Test and inspect.
Here in the LIA.
Okay.
But I don't know.
Nothing here, but fire department and LIA was the recommendation?
Well, the fire.
Yep.
Um, so that was gonna be a complete soup to nuts, the fire station. And I don't, I don't think there were any recommendations that we didn't do at the other two locations.
Okay, okay.
We can ch- double-check that, check, test and inspect.
Um, I'm just curious, Kern, you mentioned, uh, there could be a place in this, um, somewhere in Lincolnville where the sheriff's department could potentially have a spot, uh, which, which building?
Fire department.
Okay.
Yeah, I consider that our public safety building.
Yeah.
And I just, uh, I'd like to have a conversation, you know, that involved the chief, you know, um. They're looking, the, and the presentation here was Waldo County Sheriff's Department is looking for a place that they can, instead of having to go all the way back to home base to write up their reports, to make phone calls, to gather information, and things of that nature, they were looking for a place uh to be. Needs to be a place where it can be secure to them and them only. Um, and I just, it creates more presence of them in town. And I just think any, anything that's not gonna cost us uh on a yearly basis, it I just think that's more, I, I think it's space-creative, is all it's gonna cost us.
Yeah.
So I just think it would be worth the investigation.
Great.
So to speak.
Nice, certainly agree.
John, anything on your mind that we haven't discussed thus far?
No, nothing to add to the pile.
Okay. Yeah, I don't, I mean, other than the request that people really get their ducks in a row as soon as possible with, without the already, you know, known exceptions of challenges to work with, but hopefully all of the committees and department heads are aware of the process and the program and the timeline and to not invite citizens up during budget presentations with a bunch of random dollar requests would be, that's my, it's really my only request for budget Christmas. Um. Great. I'm sure stuff will come up as we go along.
Yeah.
Okay, let's move along, um, to much to Kern's allusion to a segue, um, of possible meeting with the school committee and recreation commission uh regarding athletic field maintenance. And I would argue to your point, um, that while the recreation commission has done an admirable job at trying to keep it together, they do they have two members now?
I don't know, we have four.
Four, oh, okay. I know we had lost some, yeah, anyway, they're bare bones, they're really, um, trying to do a lot with a small labor force, and uh one of the reoccurring themes are the athletic fields, because they are a creature in and of themselves. So, looking at the list of shared duties, uh, and knowing that this has been a theme really for the last several years, uh, annually reviewing this and revising it, um, does the board see merit in having another chat with the school?
With, with the, and I'm a little confused by this, I mean, I don't, maybe, maybe I just need some clarification, but I think the conversation I keep kinda hearing comes back to is, well, I, I should in, in my mind, what I keep coming back to, and I do hear in conversation occasionally, but it, it's, it seems like there's always this the town owns the fields, right, but it's really the school that's there on that day, there's a scent, I, I feel like why sometimes that the shared thing.
Doesn't work.
It doesn't, okay, so it's not just me. I, I, I mean, I, I feel like that that's, we keep, we, we keep beating our head against that conundrum, and I feel like the school board does too, a little bit, and, or you know, you I know, there's just been lots of different things where, you know, that, the, the confusion of that has, or that's caused confusion, and so it seems like the conversation, at some point, it's like ultimately this should be, either the town really has to kinda take control of it and say, and responsibility for it, and you know, just like we don't have any, um, say, in like the school board, uh, the school budget decisions, the select board's kind of, it's their thing, and there's coordination at the end of the day, but it's sort of like that part of the budget is just sort of plunked in our lap, and we're, it's like take it or leave it, right? So it seems like that should be that way with the fields too, for made, uh, just that we're, or am I correct in assuming that all parties might be seeking that out ultimately at some point to say, somebody should, one side or the other should take charge of it, and um and in saying that, and it, am I wandering into just, is, does it ultimately fall in the town's lap because the town owns the property? Or does the town have the ability to say to the school, look, you guys are, it's really in your backyard, literally, and it's, it's, you know, most of the uses other than the summer, but most of the use throughout the years, the kids, and you, you guys really should take, even though the town owns it, technically, you guys should really take care of the maintenance. And do we wanna, I don't know, so I, and I don't have, I don't actually personally have a thought, um, I, I I mean, my only, like, I do have one thought about it, is I'm real big on the no use of uh Monsanto stuff, or the, you know, the, the, you know, the, the toxic things, and so I feel like as a select board member that has a s- a real, you know, have kids in the school, and I, I feel like our children should be protected that way, and given that states like New York have outlawed it altogether, and it seems things are going that way, and for good reason, that, that, um, you know, I, I do feel like. You know, I, I do feel like, I like the idea of, of having a voice in that matter, um. But at the same time, if it didn't make sense for the town to be really running it, I, you know, I would, I could still have that voice and. And let my voice be known to the school board and stuff, but I, but I, I, you know, but at any rate, that's.
I think that's a very, and, and, uh, that's a very good explanation of two ways to do it.
Mm-hmm.
And I never thought myself of just turning it over to the school. Um, my concern with doing that is the town wants as many people through this town as we possibly can get. For our business, for our little town, you know, for all the businesses in our little town.
Mm-hmm.
And I'm not sure that that is the same minds, it would be the same mindset, would be the same mindset is the way to say that. If it was turned over to the school, because once the schedule has been met, the key is turned in, you walk out the door, okay? The, or once the skee- the, the schedule has been achieved, we have a relationship with, um. Five town baseball, five town softball, with a, with a, an ultimate frisbee, uh, group, we now have. Um, we, we now have, uh, this, uh, group that uses this, the gym and the, um, uh, tennis court, pickleball. I mean, we've, we've got more and more and more usage, plus, um. I feel that it's, I feel that it's the town's responsibility to maintain it, not the schools.
Well, and that's helpful hearing what you're, you're pointing out all those, cause that stuff I'm really not aware of, of all the other use beyond the schools is, you know, my little. My brain is sort of like, oh, the school used it most of the time anyways, but that's clear case and so, yeah.
And we're not even sure that the school committee would be willing to take it on, and we, a few years ago, we basically said. So, you want this?
Yeah.
And that, at the time, the response was, no, let's leave it just the way it is and it's, the, and then the counterpart to that was, but it's not working.
And they have done everything they possibly can, I, you know, within reason, that, I'm not, I am not discounting anything that they've done. But I just think we could do a better job of managing and maintaining it, um.
And since we own it too, on top of that, it almost, even if you, it, given everything you just said, and then if you add to that, the fact that. You know, even if we elected this, give it to the school, if push came to shove, it's still the town's land is, you know, like if something didn't work there. And they eventually land back in our lap anyhow.
To, to play the devil's advocate though, technically the school also belongs to the town.
Oh, well, yeah.
So, and we leave it to the school committee and their administration to.
Deal with the school.
Maintain and organize it and they organize outside entities, so I'm just, I'm just playing the devil's advocate because. My mind immediately goes to how would we administrate? The management of the athletic fields, who, who's physically going to do that?
Well, you're, what's, to throw confusion into that. The school uses the ball field closest to the school and they use the soccer field. Okay, the two, anything in between is utilized by five town little league, five town softball and any, anybody else that is looking to use it, so. The rec committee has managed that. So you've, but the school does the weekly maintenance to the fields that the rec committee is managing. So that adds a level of confusion in everything, in scheduling, in, in maintenance, in, in everything.
There's just too many cooks in the kitchen there.
There's, yeah, and what principal has town, has time to manage that.
And then that's right.
You know what I'm saying?
Yeah, absolutely.
It's just, and, and I know Paul would look right at us and say, well, I can do it. Done it for years, I can do it, yeah, there's no question in my mind, but that's more time and it's more manpower if it's given to them, you know, that type of thing.
Mm-hmm.
Uh, so that's.
Well, and I guess getting back to the question, does the board see value in having another conversation with the school committee to? Brainstorm this, or do we want to continue to workshop it within ourselves? Cause I feel like there's, I don't necessarily feel like we're resolved in, in the how and why, you know?
I think one of the things that's very frustrating is I think the relationship, however it's gone over the past, however many years it's been. Breeds a lot of tension, uh, between the, um, between us and the school and I just. And, and there's stuff that doesn't get done, whether it be our responsibility, theirs or both, there's stuff that we're constantly catching up to and.
If you had one clear responsible party, then if the other party had a complaint, they could come and say, hey, this, you know, this is.
This is it gets done for me, I need to have it done, yeah.
Yeah.
I'm not asking to manage their schedule of the field.
Right.
I need to know what it is so that we know when it can be maintained.
Right.
Well, but do you feel like the rec commission? My observation, and I definitely, I don't wanna put words in their mouth, but my observation is, is that they're overwhelmed with their responsibilities. So I feel.
Yeah.
Based on my past experience, I feel hesitant to give them more, such as, you know. Administering a, a significant program.
Are we unique, uh, a unique town in the sense that, that, that town owns the ball fields of a school?
Uh, I think we are.
How did that, how did that happen?
I, I, I think we are.
Well, for a little. History lesson, um, previous school was over here and didn't, my understanding, it was before my time here, didn't have ball fields out there. And the recreation commission, uh, at the time came, or a group of citizens came to the selectmen and said. We ought to have some recreation fields and the selectmen put together a recreation commission. And those folks created, in essence, a master plan for all behind the school. And then over time, it was implemented with a tremendous amount of volunteer labor efforts. Uh, arm twisting, calling in favors, whatever you wanna call it, uh, to the point where there were thousands of dollars of donated. Uh, equipment, time and materials, um, for pennies on the dollar, put out there. Um, you know, the town would buy maybe fuel to run somebody's dozer on the weekend and they, somebody donate labor on the machine and away it went. Um, and the fields got built and the recreation commission, um, oversaw the upkeep and maintenance of the fields. In conjunction with the school, at one point, the principal was actually on the recreation commission. Um, the recreation commission also, at the time, the new school was constructed. Um, um, also had funded the tennis court construction or the vast majority of that. Um, was built with monies that the recreation commission oversaw. And at one point, you know, if you recall, the school wasn't a school, school was over in Northport. I don't think the ball fields had as much use at that time. Um, because there were ball fields over in Northport where the school was located. And the school, when the school came back, the new school was constructed and the school, and the students came back, um, the school committee. In essence, expanded the custodial staff so that they could have some outside. People as well as inside people or person, um, and the town, um. Was still having a vendors do, or a vendor do the outside maintenance on the ball fields, contractor. Uh, the selectmen sought bids for that service, cause it hadn't been bid for maybe forever. Um, we had a very poor experience putting it out to bid. Um, where the contractor, you know, well, like planned to move, you know, Wednesday, but it rained Wednesday, so I was gonna come Thursday. But I have my Thursday customers, so got pushed off till set, you know, just wasn't a good experience. Uh, that contractor was let go and. School committee, where school stepped up and put people on it to get us through the hump. And then in two thousand, uh, twelve, this policy was adopted both by the school committee and the, um. Board of selectmen, so that there would be an understanding of who was doing what, to whom and when, and who was budgeting for what. And we've had our ups and downs since, um, with staffing turnover, recreation commission turnover. And then a couple of, you know, what, two or three years ago now, um, the effort was made to make sure that we got back on the. Following the policy, this board met with the school committee, um, are you willing to do this, are we still willing to do that, you know? Is there anything we need to redline? And everybody got back on board and then I think we had last year a similar conversation, but it was just the school committee chair that came. Uh, to the select board and the reason I brought it forward is because again, we're doing budget discussions upcoming. And there are costs associated both in the school budget and the town budget. And I don't wanna see us slip back into, oh, I didn't know we were doing that, I didn't know we were, I wanna make sure everybody's on the same page.
Right.
And even if it's just, uh, a note from the, me, at your instruction to the school to say. Hey, for FY twenty one, the budget we're working on, we're planning on following this policy, are you? So that something doesn't slip through the cracks, cause we don't wanna get in, you know.
In it.
September and say, hey, we don't have any money left and we still have six months or eight months of the year left to go.
I would like to know, um, what on this list, uh, didn't, wasn't really fulfilled this year? And then from that, kind of make a plan, that would be helpful for me.
I'm not sure, um, there's a number of factors of why things didn't happen. But I'm looking at it like, I'm, I'm looking into the future, um, for not only the, uh, ball fields, but the. The rest of the town owned property, uh, and its exterior maintenance, meaning its grounds. Uh, that's, that's the way I'm looking at it, I don't think it's gonna do any good to point any fingers. Uh, from the past or anything, but I think it's gonna be advantageous for this town, uh, to develop something for the upcoming future.
Yeah, I don't think there's anything on this list that didn't occur.
No.
In the past year, it may, everyone has a different opinion as to. When th- certain things ought to be done or go what height or what color white for the stripes on the field, you know, that. Smaller detail type thing, I think in the last. Eighteen months, we've done a lot better job, we had a special town meeting a couple of years ago to appropriate some additional money. We got sports fields on board, so we make sure we know who's doing fertilizer, who's not doing roundup, who's doing this. How all these things are getting done, um, the, the intent again of this was to make sure that we didn't have something fall through the cracks again. Like it did two years ago or three.
Right, and my, to your point, Kern, with the. Clear acknowledgement of the excellent work that all of the volunteers have done to get us to this point. My personal concern is overtaxing individuals who are volunteering their time to do a very huge job. And. Uh, my concern is, is over exploiting their goodwill for the cause. Is going to result in burnout and then where are we? And in having to be really honest that. I hope that we continue to have interest in robust recreation commission, I would love to see more people. Interested and involved because it gives interest in community involvement, which is the history of those facilities. But I don't want us to lean so hard on that history that we end up frying people and having them.
If, and, that, that's a very good way to put that, if, if we leaned on that rec commission. But everything that got done, they'd be in tears, they, they would be, I know David did a significant amount. And they did a lot too, uh, but there's other things coming at them and I just. It deserves a conversation for the next step.
Well, so. I have a, a, a seed of an idea, but while we're on this particular agenda item, um. Is the board in favor of asking David to reach out to the school committee and the recreation commission to say, hey? Here's where we all are, are we good for this year, is everybody fully on board?
Well, it seems like we sort of have to do that at this point, cause it's not like we could just usurp the. I hope that would be weird and awkward and not very relationship oriented to just go, you know, this isn't working, we're gonna take it back and so. I mean, for now, but, but I, but I do, but to have the conversation.
Absolutely, you know something, John, you're a hundred percent right there and in a perfect world, if we had like. Six or eight people that joined the already four in the rec commission. Then the responsibilities could be divvied up and, and it would actually come back easier.
Yeah.
But I don't see that happening, so I think, yeah, I, I, I'd like to, to make that motion, to have David reach out to them and. Are we good for this, for twenty twenty one? And do we wanna indicate that we're gonna revisit it and make some changes though?
Yeah, I think, yeah, both of those things seem, they're really in line.
Was that a motion?
Yeah, but I, but I'm, but I'm asking, should we let both of those committees know? That are you, are you good for twenty twenty one, uh, status quo? Be advised, we're gonna revisit this and make some changes, or should we not say that?
Oh, uh.
Let's, let's, my suggestion is if someone wants to second the motion that we made.
Second.
We can, let's, let's discuss it.
Okay.
So I think it's a great idea to start with what we have, firm ground. A format and then your points, all of the points that were made is. Inspiring me to think that we really should workshop this and ask our town administrator to do a little bit of research to see what other. Um, because as you always say, why reinvent the wheel? What are other institutions and organizations doing with a similar set of, um. You know, facilities such as we have, and I would say not just the athletic fields, much to your point. We have Breeze Mare Park where we have floats and we have multiple different parties using those facilities. And we have the bandstand that multiple different parties are using that, and we have the beach and that's a whole other, I mean. We really do have a very dynamic. Public, dynamic public spaces and dynamic uses of all of those spaces and that bears. I think having a larger, more comprehensive conversation that goes even beyond this. This is a piece of, of our responsibilities of public spaces. Um, and it's a point well made, so, um, I think moving on the more to the point motion. And then, ha, so, um.
And then asking, asking David to go, reach out and say, hey, we'd like to workshop, we have thoughts and blah, 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 and that is like its own separate thing.
Yeah.
Yeah, yeah, um, so if there's no more discussion on that particular motion, all those in favor? Thank you very much, and so then to that follow up point. Thank you very much and so then to that follow up point. David, do you feel clear in at least getting the conversation started for a future agenda item so that we can look at?
I think so.
Cause maybe it does mean hiring a facilities overseer to coordinate, I just, I. I immediately don't wanna think like, okay, David, Melissa, well, have fun doing all this now.
And I think the workshopping though is gonna be like, one part of it will be, you know, okay, now we've like, let's say. They agree to that motion and they concur that we're on the same page for twenty twenty one, well, part of that conversation will be when we workshop with them. Okay, well, so let's just, okay, that is your responsibility, that thing in your budget, that's in your budget, this is in our budget, cause we're gonna have to do the budget stuff anyway, so. That part we can do for the like now, this coming year, okay, now here's this other thing. This is a really complicated process and you guys have been frustrated with as much as we have. Do we don't wanna keep just, you know, do do we, do you guys want, you know, do we wanna keep re-upping this situation now, we, you know, we restabilize ourselves for another year? But should we talk about more of this responsibility moving on to us? Possibly hiring a third party to be like an oversight that coordinates with the rec committee maybe, you know, or what, there's all kinds of ways that conversation goes, but. Well, and that's like two, you know, one is like, okay, we agree, we're on the same, we're doing the same thing this year. What does that look like, all right, now going forward. So that next year at this time, we can maybe have a new motion that says. The select board will now be dealing with hiring a third party to coordinate with the rec, I'm and I'm just, that's.
Or creating, creating a new department head that.
Doing a new department head, whatever that may be, but that it's, it becomes, you know. And maybe that's not the way it goes, but we're only gonna figure that out in those conversations.
So, this type of conversation inspires me, that's huge for me. Um, so I I and I don't know if if this is where I should just say, I got something to add to. Have you got anything that we should have on our radar? But talking about this with the problems, coupled with the problems that we had and not being able to use the Little League field last year. I think it's important that the rec commission or we or someone knows that. For budgetary purposes, we need to have a a couple of estimates for. Between the upper and lower ball fields, a French drain. To keep the water, to drain the water from the upper field away from the second field. And also, I was over to the soccer field the other day, just nosing around, cause that's what I do. There was a French drain or a or a gully, for lack of a better word, to say that, I think maybe you and I talked about it. Put in there to keep the water moving away from the field and that might need to be um, scooped out. So I'm wondering if that stuff that should be brought up. Should have some numbers for budget, I don't think the school has considered that. And why would they, because they're on the hook tomorrow.
Right, so that's not necessarily something they're they're considering for their for their budget, so let's be proactive and look at that for ours.
Correct, I know previous to that little swale there being put in there, the soccer field was extremely wet and they couldn't. Really do anything on it or with it.
Well, it's.
They ditched it and it's good.
It certainly falls under subsection three, point three, the long range maintenance planning and outside vendor considerations. You know, so. Um, that certainly seems like it would bear a intercommunication with.
The other thing that kinda goes along with that is I know there are monies available for donation. And or maintenance assistance from these, from these entities that are using our ball fields. But I don't wanna get to a point where we ask them for money and we can't deliver a field.
Right, oh, yeah, right, yeah.
We've been asked, do you need any money to get that taken care of, and you know, by the league president for five town foot, five town uh, baseball, so. I feel it's our responsibility to have this in the works and to take care of our infrastructure, then we can look right at. At entities like that, say, you know, something, we gotta have something for maintenance and they're more than glad to do it. They didn't even use the field last year, they couldn't because of drainage. Uh, so, um.
In perpetu- yeah, you wanna feel that, we should take care of that for sure.
So you're talking about just establishing the clear baseline, like, okay, let's reset it to neutral.
Thanks for offering and this is what we've now got an estimate for a project and this is what we will, if you.
And I know, you know, I think things like that are going on in Rockport too, because Rockport has a rec commi- committee and they. They are responsible for Marge Jones facility. And there's a lot going on down there, so and it all costs money.
Yep, yep. But it's worth it, that really is a valuable thing though. And 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 it, you know, the longer it goes unaddressed, the more the thing, you know, it's, you know, whatever the old. Pat and ounce of prevention is worth the pat, you know.
Well, it's not.
Paddock cure or some whatever it is, it's just gonna cost more to fix it later.
It's not unlike the conversations we've been having about the pier or the L I A. Let's not throw good money after bad, let's address the issues. Make a plan, go forward, yeah. Um, do you guys need any other clarification on that, I know we kinda jumped around a lot. Okay, um, does, we do have a uh, treasurer's special warrant, um. So can I have a motion to approve the treasurers and payroll and the special warrant?
I move the board approve the treasurers and payroll warrants along with the special warrant.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion?
What is the special warrant?
Good question.
An expenditure out of Coombs Griffin.
I thought that's what it was, but I thought, geez, I just prove that with.
All those in favor? Thank you very much, uh, is there any other business that the board has? If nothing, can we entertain a final motion?
I move that we adjourn.
Second.
Moved and seconded, any further discussion, seeing nothing, all those in favor? Happy Hanukkah, happy Kwanzaa, happy Christmas.
Festivus.
Festivus.
And the rest of us.
Happy Kwanzaa.
I brought a pen today, I'm so excited. And and glasses.